In 15 years, and theirs is long term, but it could change anywhere from two to 15 years. But in 15 years, for sure, they're going to tell you what they're going to do with their property. So you get a vision out there. Okay, the National Department, here's what it could look like. This whole area could look like a governmental center in 15 years, 15, 20 years. But it's a long-term vision, and that's just like what your comprehensive plan is supposed to do. It's a long-term vision. And if council only wants to spend $20 million, that's what we'll shoot for, is $20 million.
Here's the question. You got Robins Island, you know that's a real issue. When you got something going on out there, you've got to have different lanes. You've got to have traffic control. This is going to continue to grow out there. Now you're getting a pub out there on that same road. We need to do something about that intersection, period.
Money for it.
Yep, we got money for it. That highway is ours, not the OT's. We can control the speed on that highway. I've heard over and over and over and over and over that they're afraid to go out onto that traffic because 55 turns into a circle. So we backed that speed down where it should be. We put a control there. Now we got a safe exit and entrance.
Which would be helpful for Robins Island.
Extremely helpful, yes. So you're doing, you're getting both places. You're going to get Robins Island, and you're going to get, if you decide that, the future of the community center and City Hall.
I said that I don't know that I've heard over and over again, Mike, but I have heard over and over again that there's concerns that seniors have of going driving to the current community center location. But I think more than anything, I hear them stating their preference for a mall location. So if I'm taking seriously those comments, you know, I mean, I've had conversations with people who talked about, like, well, the speed limit can be adjusted. They still don't want it out there. They still want it closer to the center of the community.
Although, years ago, when I-
Well, of course, it always depends on who you're talking to.
Two years ago, when I started, they wanted to stay there. They didn't want us to move them from the community center because they wanted their dance floor.
Yeah, which makes it harder if you don't-
So not, you know-
We came through two years, started to gaze 15 years to the future becomes difficult, and it's pretty subjective.
Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you. When you talk about, when you talk about seniors, okay? What I see, the other issue that we have right now with community centers, we have the senior club. That's who we've been hearing from. One of the scripts that have left messages on everyone's phones and those types of things with that. But the other activities of the community center are not necessarily just the senior club. And so there's two factions there. And I think when Leslie talks about, what do we want the community center to be? We have a why, we have an event center. We have, you know, we have a community center. So who's going to use what in five years from now or 10 years from now? But I think we've had overwhelming- The people who've talked to me are part of the senior club. We have a responsibility to that. And I don't know, it's my understanding, I was on that board for four years. It's my understanding, they get to use it on Wednesday afternoons and, or Wednesdays and Friday afternoon. We have a responsibility to that. And we have also a commitment that no matter what we do, they will have, that we will need to find them a place to be while we do whatever we're going to do. Because the timing of that. But it's frustrating to me too, in that I think our responsibility is to look to the future with, what's the senior club going to be in five to 10 years? Are there going to be younger people? Am I going to go out there? And who's going to go out there as the senior club transitions? And then the other activities that Britta's been working on at the community center. Is that what we're planning for? Or what is it that we're planning for? And, you know, I still question, I mean, we're lucky to have what we have. And the budget that we have is not significant. But just like here, we do something grandiose. We're not going to be able to stack up the way it is now. We're going to look at additional costs, additional expenses, and those types of things. And back to, we committed $2 million. I mean, if we're talking about raising taxes to do all of this, I, I'm struggling with it. I am. And I don't, I don't think using the road as, is an excuse to go to the mall.
Councilmember Nelson.
There's a lot of traffic on Wilmer Avenue. A lot of traffic around, safety-wise, on First Street and Wilmer Avenue. We have busy streets. That same thing is going to happen out there. It already is. Try to get onto Wilmer Avenue or off Wilmer Avenue if there isn't a stoplight with that. I'm sorry.
Councilmember Nelson, I share some of your concerns about the senior center. I asked Ken before the meeting started, how many people utilize the community center on a daily basis? Some of them, 200 a day. I was surprised.
I, I'm sorry.
And I, and I, I think, I have the reservations about my age group and younger, whether or not they're going to utilize this facility if we build. I know, it's a bit disgusting.
Does Britta keep a lot of, how many, I mean, could tell you for sure? That used to be, I think, a question that was always back when we had to be in direct with sign-ins on work classes and those types of things. I go out that direction for work all the time. I drive through there sometimes to go home from my work. And the parking lot's not full.
I think that what staff would like to know, and I think we've got it off top, but what is there that council needs from us? What do you feel you're missing?
I'll echo what the mayor said earlier, that I think I need more details on the financials and the tax implications.
But the-
And I get that we can set a budget, but ranges would be-
Yep, and we will have, we have that information for you, a tax impact. So we will present that to you on Monday night.
In the community center, we've got $2 million to fix it, sort of, Steve.
It was just $2 million to go towards it. It wasn't to finish anything.
To fix it. We could use it to that. Okay, this, this, so here, okay? If we, if we did that, is that sufficient? Isn't the right word. But is it, is it a place where they could use and use correctly, use jointly in the, you know, talking about community center and all the people out there? If we, we can then put addition to it, but mostly, can we repair it? Can we repair that building? And make it usable instead of spending millions of dollars? Can we make that usable?
Estimated cost for the use of the existing community center was eight to 10 million dollars.
Just to redo it?
Yes. Remodel existing building. Actually, it's less than that because this has another building in it. So another, it's $2 million less. So six to eight million dollars.
Good, so here's a question that's in my mind. If we rebuild the community center where it is, are we going to be okay with? I'm making an assumption.
Is there always something-
But if we're going to be at a community center location with City Hall, are we okay with having City Hall behind the community center?
And I get what you're talking about because as far as the community center goes, there's more users in a day, whether it's 100, whether it's 200. And there's been a part of me that has thought, if that was our location, and I understand the differ- I mean, I understand the progression of possibly building the community center on the south side, going east-west on that wing, the new addition, because then they could just transfer into it, and then building the City Hall on the front. But the major user of that combined building is going to be the community center. They should have the better view, the better location. And City Hall should be to the south.
There are not a lot of people that go to City Hall.
Right.
Easily under a dozen people, I think. Right? Plus, we're going to the new, our new computer, I mean, software, it's going to be probably even less.
No, I don't think it's really going to be any less because our planning department is the business department. And those people need to come to the community center or the City Hall. And, you know, this is, so, to me, what I'm hearing is the discussion has always been mostly heavily centered around the community center and not the City Hall. This started as a City Hall years ago discussion, not a community center discussion. But now we're very heavily on the City Hall or community center. So is that what you want to focus on? I mean, are we getting to, you know, is the outlook for City Hall and for our staff that, you know, our, I mean, the age of our staff now, or our staff that's going to be here for the next 20, 30 years, are we going to let that just stay status quo? And, or, or worry about the community center more than the City Hall staff?
I think they're one in the same if we're talking about combining the building. So that, I don't think one overshadows the other. I think it's, it's just good conversation about usage and the two being in the same location.
Councilmember Sholwes.
I, I feel that the focus is on the community center because that's what we're hearing about. People don't, I was about to say they don't care. That's not right, that's not accurate. But the, the, the passion is about where is the community center going, not where is City Hall. I don't know that people really have strong feelings of City Hall as a pennies or a new building or combined with municipal utilities. It's, it's the community center is what's, what people have the passion about and where that's going to be. So I think that's what I'm focusing on. These are the calls I've gotten, all been on the community center, not, not one on City Hall.
Great, they don't care where City Hall is. They don't care about the city's halls.
Well, that might be a little strong, see, they don't care.
It's your, it's not really about it.
Councilmember Nelson.
I've had people stop and see me on the reverse, that, that we need to focus on City Hall. That this is out of control from a standpoint of, what's our priority? What's our priority? Where do we start with this? I think we're lucky to have this community center that we have. Do some things need fixing? Yeah, do some things, yes. But we've been bouncing this around for a long time. I, I'm not, I'm sorry, but, you know, even your comment about, let's vote about, you know, we didn't hang these people out to dry. We made a decision before. The drawing that was done for the community center of City Hall, put City Hall upstairs. There was one of the first ones.
No, one, one Engen had done.
No, no, no. There was a drawing where the City Hall was the second floor. At, the community center was on the lower level, and the City Hall was, and there was a nice open space to look at Robins Island.
Well, then that had to be in Engen drawn because it was around the K P drive.
No, it was when, it was when the City Hall task force met.
I don't know about that.
Yeah, that was Engen.
And I'm not saying your, your two-story is right or whatever. But I, I, I don't want to build a short pizza or build an office building.
I understand that, I, I understand that. However, it, it was interesting to hear you talk about air quality. We went down this road once before, and we had an air quality study done in the air inside the City Hall. I'm not saying we shouldn't be doing something. The air inside the City Hall was not a problem. We've had that done.
I didn't know that.
Yeah, we did. And, you know, because that was like, you know, because at that point in time, if we had bad air quality, we could have moved. We could have torn the place down. We could have done lots of things. And it wasn't an issue. We've been dancing around all these stories about multiple things.
Maybe the question is, where do you want City Hall? Where do you want to be?
With the community center.
Yeah, with the combined building.
Not where the current community center is, but with the community center, the com- the combined building.
One building, both, combined, both.
And where are you going to put them?
Why not where it's at right now?
City Hall or the community center.
No, a combined building. He said, put City Hall with the community center. Why not on the land that we have right here?
Which land?
Where the community center is now.
Where the council had voted for it in 2020.
Somebody had been voted for, hasn't it?
Yes.
But you know that.
Council voted for it in 2020 to be at the Robins.
Before we had the JCPenney option.
No, we had a vote against the JCPenney option. And said, we did the design to be at the current location where the community center is.
Sure.
So why not, I'm, I'm, I'm asking you.
No, like, and I think, like, Julie's right. Like, if we're honest with each other, like, we know that it's not the same context that we were voting on back then than it was when Wilmer 10 brought the JCPenney option back on the table back in January. It's a different, it's a different reality.
No, it isn't.
I think it is.
It's the same thing.
It, it wasn't really on the table in the same way in 2020 as it was.
It was, it was.
I disagree, and I think-
We were there.
And, you know, for me, the reason that you don't put it at the current community center location is because, because there's a better value at the mall. Because I think it's a better location for where people are driving about as they travel around their days. This is more the center of our community. And I will concede that Wilmer will grow north into the future, and that will still be the center of the community even with the growth to the north. And I think the overwhelming amount of public feedback that we've gotten on this tells us that the citizens and the taxpayers of this community prefer the mall option, the phone calls, emails that we've all gotten. You know, I doubt it's scientific, but the poll from the West Central Trail, 80%?
Well, have you read Vision Wilmer on its hook at all?
No.
So, I ask very int- I've been very vocal, I've been very vocal from the beginning, and I'm against the mall, and I will be, and I will vote that way with that. So people who contact me, you're getting people who contact you because they think you're for the mall. And I'm getting people who are contacting me because they, they think I'm against the mall. And so when you say the overwhelming support, I'm going to go back to who's, who's out there writing little blocks of paper and giving them to people to call people? It's not, it's not the people that are calling me. I've had people who were going to be an investor in the mall. I've had people, a variety of people calling me. It's not the, it's not the same. And I'm going to agree with Vicki. We did this once before, and we voted it down. It was the same. And, and to invest this much more money in the mall and the future of the mall is, I don't know what it is.
I, I just want to say that, you know, and all the respect in the world for the guys that invested in the mall, Wilmer 10 or Wilmer 8, whatever you call yourself, I don't know. I do not trust the current person who owns that mall. I do not trust the person that has let that parking lot go downhill and has never done anything to fix it. And when he has fixed it, it was a joke. I do not trust, I do not trust that individual. This is all about trust for me. I'm looking at, I'm trying to do something for the sake, for the people. Okay? Everything in my body says, I trust Wilmer 10. I do not trust the owners of that mall. I have read about what he's done in the past with other places. That's what he does. I'm not saying good or bad. All I'm saying is, I walk into that mall, and I see water pouring through the ceiling, and people have buckets who have businesses there, and there's nobody fixing those holes. I don't trust that person. I don't trust that person. I don't trust the person when I see these old people walking through the holes in the parking lot, falling over and hurting themselves. How long has that been going on? That's why I voted, I'm not voting for the mall. I don't trust the current owner. Trust people that have invested? I do not trust the owner. Speak out.
I agree with Mike on that. Silvian Tribune had a paper, I mean, article about the parking lot. And I grabbed a quote from Tim Jackson, who is the manager of the mall. He said, redoing a parking lot is mall money out. There's no money in. We're not guaranteed that somebody's going to come in here. I think that the biggest misconception is, oh, just fix the parking lot. Yes, we always liked that, but it's not business savvy to do that without maybe trying to use these funds that we can get from the watershed. That's how we would do it, make it more feasible to do it. So the mall's plan is to use our money to fix $2 million worth of the parking lot with our $500,000, and then not fix the rest because they don't want to invest in their own mall. So why would we think they're going to invest in the mall after we put something in there? That's what bothers me. I just don't see them lifting a finger. I think they think we're going to come in and save the day. Maybe they're hoping that they'll be able to sell it once we get in there because Rockstep, I looked it up. It said, according to their website, they have a two-to-seven-year hold on their properties, and then they will sell. So they've been in there since 2016. I feel like they're getting ready to sell. They're hoping to get us in there and make it more, more attractive. Yeah. And right now, you drive by, not only are there potholes, there's grass and weeds growing up. So we're going to have our nice spot with our nice parking lot, and then grass and weeds and potholes and falling down building. I'm just, you know, I just can't see that. So that's, I would be against the mall. And like Mike, I appreciate the investors. It's, it's Rockstep property that I have hard times.
And I want to say, I agree with you talking about the way, like, I don't trust Rockstep. You know, I think Walmart's a great example right now of like, what a business that cares about the community can do to their parking lot, right? I'm also not going to lease any space from Rockstep.
We're going to be married to that because we're going to be attached.
It's a separate property.
It's not, it's not.
Building is connected.
Building's connected, and there'll be agreements with parking lot that go back to us. It's not going to be ours.
It's not our system.
No, it is.
Well, what's the future? What do you see the future of that 38 acres that's left after the mall is gone? And the City Hall sits in the middle?
I don't see the mall going.
Right, correct.
I think you got to look further in the future.
I am, and I don't see the mall going. Just as much as you could say, you can see it gone.
It's still the center of the community, that location.
No, it'd be different. It'll look different.
It will look different.
It won't be, it won't be the mall. The mall won't be there. I can guarantee that. It won't, it won't be there.
I can agree that regardless.
So whatever happens in development, they got to work around us.
There's, there are still people.
And there are.
Sorry, thank you. There are still people who truly believe the heart should be downtown. And if you look at what some suburbs are doing with downtown, you know, they're saying, don't leave downtown. I don't see the mall as the center of the community. I don't. I don't see it as the future center of the community. And, and it, I, I just don't. And there's transitioning going on with other properties all the way around the mall. With that, I don't, I don't know what should happen to the mall. I was a great perpetrator, JCPenney mall shopper. I missed it. But that's not a reason for us to be there. And I don't think we can rescue the mall by just buying that property because it's still going to be connected. Parking lot's still going to be a problem. If I, if I need to go to the mall, and the only place that has a decent parking lot is going through the city parking lot, that's where I'm going. It's not our parking lot. It's the mall parking lot. And I, you know, go across the street, mall over there. Our Lake Region Bank, it's got some of the same things there. Part of the parking lot's been fixed, part of it hasn't. It's the same thing. What do we, do we own the responsibility to rescue? I don't think we do. I don't think we do. Community, I mean, there are other, how do we do this? Back to what should it be? What are other communities doing? Is this, is it a city responsibility or is it a community responsibility?
Julie.
I don't, I don't think, we're not bailing anybody out. We, when we talk about the center, it's physically, geographically closer to the center of the city than out on North 71. And I'm not saying it's the, nobody's saying it's the business hub of the center of the city. It's just more geographically central.
I don't think so.
Well, it's more geographically central than North 71. Can you give me that?
I was talking about, I was talking about leaving downtown.
Yeah, that was part of your conversation. Yes, I know. So it's, that's why I'm hearing from a lot of people that they like that location. And you can say, let's say, you can say the, I think the mall will change. I do. I think they will go to more open face access, kind of like Maple Grove, where you have each business that, that has an outside entrance. I see, I see that coming in the future just as much as anybody else can say they see it going away. That's my opinion, okay? I like the concept of, yes, our area of the mall at the JCPenney's location will be renovated and look good. I don't see things in that area going away. Cash-wise, isn't going away. The bank isn't going away. The school isn't going away. Aldi's isn't going away. Walmart isn't going away. That whole area is still going to be a vibrant shopping area with the City Hall and the community center in that same area. I like the concept of what they could do with the runoff, what the plan is for the runoff from the mall. That's a much better plan than all of that grease and debris going in. It will get filtered before it goes into the grass lake. I like that concept. And that's thinking bigger, and that's thinking bigger than just fixing the mall. And a lot of people really like the idea of repurposing something instead of having to build brand-new. Repurpose what we have, use what we have, and that is more palatable to people in their pocketbooks. That's, that's why I, and other people who talk to me, are gravitating towards that.
So we have another building that should be repurposed. That's auditorium.
Sure. We're not talking about auditorium today.
No, but we could tear down the city hall and refurbish the auditorium, use it for part of it and have, you know, so, and don't, don't throw the, you know, I'm sorry, and Maple Grove.
I agree.
Maple Grove, in order to accomplish that, you'd tear down the malls. You wouldn't re, you wouldn't, you wouldn't just put outside doors because you're talking about like being along the streets. You're not talking about a mall. That's not what Maple Grove is.
I know, I the discussion about where the center of the business community is and so on, I our city's not that big. Whether it's, how about North 71 or it's all the way out on the southern part or I, our city's not that big. I don't see that as a factor.
I think it is.
I don't know, truly wanted to say so.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, you're saying that you don't think the mall, the mall is going to be vibrant, still going to be there. We're hoping that the building that we built is going to be there 50 to 100 years from now. That building's already 50 years old, the other part of the wreck.
Yes.
Okay. Are we going to take the risk? I mean, if you can guarantee that mall is going to be there, okay, we're good.
And it doesn't matter.
But you can't.
It doesn't matter that we are there.
Sure it does. What, what are you going to do if everybody moves out of that mall and there's nothing left? But Rockstep going to keep maintaining that building? No. They want to maintain the parking lot. You think they're going to maintain the building? Go on the roof. Take a look at the roof. Go inside the roof and take a look. See what's in there. Talk to the people. It's not a good place. Okay, I'm just saying, we got a guarantee with new, new buildings or we do another building out of community center and city hall out there. We got a new building. We know it's going to be around for 50 years, right? Right? Can you guarantee me that, that in the people of this community, that's going to be there in 50 years?
I think our building will be there in 50 years. It'll have a new growth. And the brick isn't going anywhere. That building's going to be there 50 years from now. I, I very confidently could say I could guarantee that.
The engineering stuff that we've gotten back on the mall, it's really no different than what we've gotten back on the community center, right? Both places need new roofs.
So if we're talking refurbishing that, well, we refurbish current community center. Add to it, we talked about the back half. Build a new, I mean, I think that could save us significant money. So that we're, we're doing our best to keep costs down. We can, you know, find out, maybe one thing we can find out is, not that we necessarily want to go with the minimum, but what is, you know, what, what's the bottom that, that we could find acceptable? And, and instead of going top end, find somewhere in the middle.
And so, and that's, that's why if you pick a site, then we can work with the architect to get you a very fine tuned number. Until a site is picked, everything is a guess. Everything is a guess. And I, all your, all your estimates all range in this 20 to 30, $30 million. You know, so I think it comes down to what site do you think is the best site? I mean, just this week, I even got more information than I don't even want to put out on the table. But I do, I have more information for downtown. Good. More information for another completely different site altogether, but I'm not doing that.
Mostly and I discussed and I said, I don't think we want.
Just tell me. Yeah, you might as well add the other squirrel to the circle here. But I'm just saying that, you know, of the sites that you've been talking about all these years, do you see the future long, long term into seeing what that looks like in the future? Now, I see, to me, I see the mall totally different in that whole area just being developed and city hall should not be in the middle of it. Is that everything's got to work around us? And so I, but I see that totally different and that's just from experiences and and why do we want more property? Then we've got three other properties we got to figure out what to do with. We got three properties right now that we could figure out what to do with. And just work on our own property and maintain or develop our own property into a vision.
Yeah, SWCD, I was, what I was working with with the NR, I also worked a lot with Grass Lake Project. And we pretty much, I wanted to go into it, but it took a long, long time for that to develop. The current structure of that ditch system right now is not conducive to that parking lot. And will not be until some major changes are made on some ditches. It will not drain. It will not filter. And you can ask the boss or SWCD, because what I'm saying is fact. That the, but things have to be done. Things have to be done first.
We aren't going to change that unless we jack Wilmer up to two feet in the air.
And I really want to go into it because we had so much we had to get that Grass Lake project done. And there was a lot of hard work, a lot of many, many hours into that project.
I think, and it's, I think I recall that there was nine inches of drop from the cash wise. The big culvert, the concrete, then out to Lake Lakota, we had nine inches of drop. Yeah. We're flat.
So I think in essence, it's a time.
I just want to say quickly.
We have what we need or are there's anything else?
I just wanted to say quickly something that hasn't really been mentioned, but gives me a lot of pause. Concerned about leaving downtown. It seems like the nine of us haven't really been talking about it that much, which leads me to think that whatever our decision is, is it's probably not downtown. If we leave downtown, I think we have to do that well. I think we have to think about what we're, what we're doing, how the message we send to the community for an area that I think is just phenomenal. And I like spending time down there and I know a lot of people do. I don't want that to be, you know, that others should give up on too. It's a great place down there, you know? You've been so involved down there. I don't know if you have thoughts about what it might look like for us to leave.
I have. So I think we should fix up the community center where it currently is. Then after all the findings we have for the auditorium, I don't really see there's much hope in saving it. I think we should put city hall right there and use, use the historic pieces of the auditorium in our new city hall. And then it would be downtown.
Do we have any price estimates for anything like that?
Oh, yeah, they're all in, you're, they're all in your.
The BKB stuff can.
Yeah, they're all in your, BKB stuff has gotten. Well, we do know what it does. We have discussion on Monday night.
Something's going to have to be done with the auditor regardless.
I am against tearing down city auditorium until we have turned every leak over, look for money to repair that building. With that, we have been, what we've done to that is very unfortunate that we did not do repairs and did not do some of those things. And what we've been left with that led in some of those six things. It's a problem. But I'd like to see, you know, maybe we need a pause. Maybe we're not ready to make this decision. Maybe we, maybe we need to say no to utilities and no to Rockstep and say we're going back to drawing board, figure out what we need to do with that. What's best for this community? Do we need to be downtown? Yeah, maybe we need a task force to, to help us with the auditorium. I don't know. I don't want to make a mistake and we're set very next. Let's get it right. I don't know if we're ready to make this decision. And I think our community is as divided as this council is. And I don't want to be pressured into going somewhere to do something that is short term. Short term thinking. I don't know. We've left a lot of things up in the air.
Stop the discussion or?
I think so. We don't, we heard anything different. Well, would, would everybody be up for voting next Monday?
No.
Yes or no? Just on the mall and utilities so they can forward. We can't just keep on. I mean, I feel like we have all the information.
Have to vote on utilities, I feel like.
Yeah, utilities, yes.
That we have.
Yeah.
I, 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 I think even maybe tonight, we need say yes or no to the utilities. They got to know by Monday.
No, they had their, they had their meeting this morning.
Yeah, but we're going to.
No, John knows that it's going to be Monday night.
Yeah, okay. Okay. I misunderstood. The answer is going to be Monday night. So are we going to vote on that tonight?
Yeah.
Well, we can't, well, the only one missing is Tom Butterfield, but it is a work session. It'll be on the agenda Monday night for discussion.
For the utilities.
For the utilities.
I'm fine with that.
What about a location for the city hall and community center? What more information do we think there's going to be that we don't already have to help us make that decision? You say there's a lot of things up in the air. But what, what is that so that we can get those things answered and make a decision?
That's what Liz would say.
Tax impact, which you, yeah.
When will we have that?
Monday night. You want me to send it out earlier? I can send it out earlier.
We're putting $500,000 away.
Yes, although right now I think this year it's 600, I think it's over 630, 630,000 if I'm not mistaken this year.
For two years.
Yes, we're over $1 million.
Right.
Right now.
Just revealed something? How long will we bond for?
30 years.
30.
Yeah, we can bond 30 years. That's what the tax impact will show.
Right. The last time we talked about the touring, I told you I was going to try to get ahold of some veteran, I mean, some VA program to see what we can do. Uh, that's been done or that's going out there. That's what they're searching right now. Supposed to, I don't want to hear back, but we are looking for funding.
Monday you'll hear.
I know. The best, mom VA, great. But, you know, it was a number of different veterans organizations. It's out there. So we'll see what happens. That's November Nelson.
No, I've heard three people talk about not moving downtown or be concerned about leaving downtown, whether we do or not. We talked about that the last time we were on too. With that, but I don't know. I can't support tearing down auditorium, build a city hall there. I can't.
Not even keeping a third of it? The front face and the war room?
I haven't intact or moving pieces around. I've heard of tearing down building using some of the things to replace it. No. I think there's programming that could be done there that we're not doing. Some of those things and so, but that's a, that's a question of location, but another work session. Back to the, let's get it right. Let's not be forced to make a bad decision.
All right.
I'll bring you that way.
Okay.
Would you, would you say that we had the figures of what it would take to build the city hall at the city auditorium site? I don't think we had anything like that.
Yeah, it was at the last assessment.
Yeah. I thought it was like 2 million to fix what we had or with the, the foundation.
No. This is the future. The red is the city hall with the auditorium torn down and the city hall torn down.
This was from June 12th work session.
Yes.
Do that include buying out the whole part of her name?
No, it's an option, but it is not. It's not necessary.
So that's with no new land purchase? I'm just confirming this now without, the city's not buying new land for this.
No. Except eight parking spaces.
The two buildings can't be put in, or the two, the community center and city hall cannot be together on that property.
Yeah, we don't have the parking capability. In your original packet back in November, November 1st, there was a plan for block 50 with the community center and city hall and then you end up parking for it.
Crosses my mind.
Parking room.
Crosses my mind that it's a divided council, which I would agree with. Between the two sites we've been spending so much time talking about is downtown, is downtown at the current location remodeled, perhaps the compromise you get behind.
Um, to remodel the current downtown building that's 1945?
I'm talking about like now, using that space.
Yeah. Yeah. Got it.
Set everyone's choice to.
Current location.
Use this space?
Built this current location at the auditorium. It's not others' choice to. It's not your choice to.
Tear down the auditorium.
Well, I don't know if it's going to be a tear down. But if we're talking just about location, which I feel like is what I'm hearing, the staff would like us to decide next. Is this maybe the compromise?
I don't think we'd have to tear it down. You don't think we'd have to tear the auditorium? No.
Sorry, you're going to clear your head.
It's, I can tell you that if you try to tear that auditorium down, we're going to have some issues. Well, there's going to be issues regardless. Yeah.
Which issues are you talking about? Community outrage issues or?
Community.
Yeah, okay.
Community wants that auditorium.
Well, so we use it as city hall then or?
Do they want the auditorium or the veterans room?
They want, oh, they both. They want to say, they want to say what's there that's historic. But they want the auditorium. Auditorium is part of the city. I think the auditorium needs a lot of, a lot of work, a lot of work.
So when the, when the power plant, when they want to take that down, they gave tours and when you went through it, you could not deny that you had to get rid of it because it was so bad. I feel like if we give tours of the auditorium, people will see firsthand. We can't really keep it. Because I thought we should keep it until I had a tour. Then I was like, oh gosh, this is not.
And I have to think, I, I have to say we've got fantastic soul to here. Right now we have no activity at auditorium. There's nothing.
Men's basketball in the morning. That's it.
But Doug, you and I talked about that. That's a program to, they chose to program out here. My kids play volleyball. They'd rather play on the wood floor. They'd love to play at the auditorium. But it's, it's out here. You can play pickleball and stuff. You could do all sorts of things, but we're stuck right now and now we need to get it cleaned, fixed. You know, to do that. So, maybe tomorrow.
All right, so we're going to vote Monday night on the MUC combined facility, right?
I'll bring you more info.
Combined, and you'll bring us more, more info on X.
X impact?
Is there something else?
No. Well, if you want other alternatives, I'll give you other alternatives.
It's here.
Yeah.
I'm less survivable.
Well, I might as well. So downtown, we have a letter of intent for block 50. So they are looking at, if you would want to have a city hall on block 50, they're currently looking at where that would work best on block 50 for a city hall. And S. And estimates right now, just for building, is seven, about seven million dollars, of course, but that's, there's architectural work still going on on that, design, you know, light design work on that. And so then if your soft cost of three million dollars, you'd be up to ten million dollars for a city hall. For downtown. Or you could go Skylark Mall is up for sale for three point five million dollars and you could have sixty three thousand square feet at Skylark Mall. Includes parking lot, includes the whole building, you have control of everything then, so there's no, there's no, if, sans or buts, who owns what or what or where or anything else, city would own the whole building. And you can also lease out the building too.
That's Audrey.
Block fifty, does that include a parking, right?
Yes, it would include a parking ramp and residential apartments. And even if the city hall wasn't there, it's still including a parking ramp. That's the criteria for block fifty, must have a parking ramp.
So we would still own land there?
Yes. We would own the city, the city property.
Would we own the ramp too then?
No. Nope.
Another developers looking at retail and a ramp?
It's, it's multi housing.
What about, what about the dental office? They have.
That's not, that's not our discussion, so I don't, that's their, it has to be their discussion, not our discussion. We only own our property.
Did we make some head right?
We can't say an hour, not really.
I guess we're not going with MUC. There you go, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right.
Nick, close this right there, yeah?
We have to go into call session?
Yeah, hold on.